Here we go. It is 5:30. We call the August 12th Board of Education meeting to order by standing for the question, please. That's allegiance.
Students of the United States of America and to Republic for which it stands, my nation your God is the law, liberty, and justice for all.
Call the rule, please.
Mr. Zappala.
Here.
This is Gillis.
Here.
Mr. Engel. President. Dr. Master. President. Mrs. Morgan Wackel.
Recommend to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums?
So.
First, second. Questions, concerns? Call the rule, please.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Dr. Master. And Mrs. Wackel. I'm Mr. Zappala.
Aye. Do we have any ready for hearing the question?
Yes.
Public hearing opportunity. Public input on the 25, 26 calendar. Anybody speak on that? Okay. Moving on. Chair's report. The papers are coming.
Advance, please. I just wanted to follow up one of the goals in the 23, 24 Treasury, Treasurer's Office, was the Treasurers manual and to get it published, again, updates and published. We are working on final edits right now. And it should literally be published at the end of the week. We are planning to give each secretary department or building a hard copy of it in one of my beautiful green folders that I recycle. But we will also put it on the Treasurer's website. And then what we're going to work on later as addenda are like work instructions, how to do specific things in the newness, how to do an account inquiry, how to process the requisition step by step, things like that that don't necessarily need to be in the first one of the Treasurer's manual. So this is what it's looking like right now. It's not typically something that's approved by the board, so I'll let you guys know when it gets published out on the district website. Next page. So we just passed around the monthly recap, and this is the only month of the year where the numbers on the right match the numbers on the left, or page vice versa, right? So the ones to date are in the third column on the left, and those match the dollar amounts to the third column on the right. Green means it's a favorable variance, meaning we receive more this year in revenue than we did last year at this time, or we spent less this year than we did last year at this time. And at the bottom, we have the first, the single asterisk is that we received two real estate advances that were more than last year's real estate advances. And just to recap, these are calendar year 23 taxes that are being paid second half. Second half 2023 is received in July and August. And then the two asterisks, which is on line 1035, if you recall unrestricted, is accommodation revenue. We've just, we're based on the formula, receiving or funding than we did last year. Same way with line 104, which is the restricted line. And then in the other category, 106, line 106, other revenue, that also is greater revenue, the other category, the line share, that is investment revenue, which I think was just about $93,000 in July. So this will change. Along the bottom, you see the cash balance at the end of fiscal '23, or excuse me, at the end of July in fiscal '23, we had $25.6 million on hand. Last July, we had $22.2. This July, we have $22.364. Doing well so far. Definitely that will, we should be receiving the tax settlement probably tomorrow, so that will tell us where we're landing on calendar year '23 tax question. Any questions about this?
Let me give you a little bell.
What?
Little bell, so every time you need the D slide sweep, you can just ring a bell. Or it could like.
Just a little ding.
Yeah, like a phone projector. I was thinking Storage Wars. My kids love Storage Wars, so.
So onto this evening's recommendations, I ask the board to approve and amend the minutes of the regular meeting in July 22nd and the special meeting on July 24th, which, if you recall, is our board retreat. I ask that the July 2024 financials are acknowledged, same for reports you always receive. I do want to point something out to you, though, is that the forecast line item reports are no longer beret of blue and orange, they are amber's green and yellow. So I did not do this myself, our friends at Connect programmed the reporting to do that, so all of those reports have been included as exhibits. And then we have, I believe, five then and now invoices. And if you recall, you guys see them all the time, so it's not that it is a standard business practice, a purchase order is always supposed to be in place before the district is obligated. We have some here that didn't happen before. Some of them were fiscal '24 obligations, in which there wasn't a purchase order when we ended June. I've discussed this with that particular department, so I think that going forward, we can clear that up. Sometimes it's speaking different language. You know, I speak in financial, school financial ease, whatever you want to call it, which is a foreign language for a lot of other people. So I just think that talking to people about it, bringing it to the department's attention, that we can reduce these, but we would really like to have mil then and now's every month. And that's the goal. So I just, I just didn't know what the level of understanding was among the board with then and now's, and it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing conversation with the district. Next page. The return of advances. If you recall, in June, the advances to federal funds that you all approved, now we're approving them to be returned from the federal grant over to the general fund, total $18,025.48. And then we have the commercial paper and banker's acceptances, and that's the sale purchases and revenue information that you see in exhibit 8H. That is in a higher advice code requirement that we have the board acknowledge that covered here. We do not have banker's acceptances. I couldn't really explain succinctly what a banker's acceptance is, used more out in the financial world than they are in the district's. Commercial paper is something that we use heavily, and there is a limit to the amount of commercial paper that a local government can invest in, and it's 40% of interim balances. So we use that heavily, and again, I was indicating that Redtree Financial, our investment advisor, they look at our monthly financial summaries and they look at our five-year forecasts to try to match the investment term to periods of cash flow needs. So obviously, like we talked about in the last meeting, we were really able to capitalize on investment revenue last year. We hope to do the same in the future. Are there any questions on the commercial paper? Okay. Then once the board approves this, acknowledges this, then I will certify it, and it needs to be uploaded to the Auditor of State's website, so it does get forwarded on to the Department of Education Workforce and the Auditor of State. And then, of course, archived in my audit paperwork for fiscal '24. And then finally, in item G, we have the donations.
Is there a motion? Tuesday, second. Any comments or questions?
Oh, thanks for answering my question earlier as well. The commercial papers.
You got it.
Any comments? Hearing done, call the rule, please.
Mrs. Gillis. Aye. Mrs. Wackel.
Aye.
Mr. Engel. Dr. Master. Aye. Mr. Zappala.
Aye. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, from our report, I wanted to take some time to go over the new cellphone policy with the board, just so you're aware, in case any questions come to you, and just talk a little bit about, you know, policy, how it translates into practical, practicality of it every day in our schools, right? So, as you know, you passed a cellphone policy that was required by the state of Ohio. The state of Ohio, down here on the slide, required that schools pass policies that limited cellphone use in schools as much as possible, and also eliminated the cellphone distractions in classroom settings during instruction time. Now, there are a few exceptions to the rule when it comes to medical reasons or other emergency reasons for a child or a family, and so those are always in place, but generally, I think the state and lawmakers recognize the impact that cellphones are having with children in our society today, and so for reasons about, you know, their learning and eliminate distractions from learning, eliminate negative mental social effects on it, also some of the negative uses of cellphones during the school day for students, when it comes to possibly bullying and other factors, I think the state, you know, the lawmakers made this a specific thing, and so we're moving forward with following their directions on what to do. So in our policy, real quick, how it's applied in our schools is pretty simple. Cellphone use by students applies to cellphones, the students on school property during school hours. Students are prohibited from using cellphones at all times unless approved by a staff member or administrator. And students are prohibited from taking pictures and recording other students and staff members at all times. Now, in action, I'm going to read these out, so they're on YouTube for everyone to see, and Mr. Robinski can put these slides up for everyone to read themselves, but the policy in action is this. This applies to cellphones only, so it does not apply to other electronic devices, watches, other, possibly laptops or Chromebooks they might have in the classroom, and that doesn't mean that the cellphone policy can't be changed in the future, but right now for Amber's, it applies to cellphones over top of it. Two, the policy will be moderate to be changed, like I said, by the board at any time. Also, this is during, during school hours on school property, so this policy does not apply to right before school, right after school, or like athletic practices, athletic events, evening events, sporting events, so this is strictly during school hours on school property. Just important for parents and students to understand that. In grades K through 8, which is Powers Nord and A.J.H., cellphones will be turned off and should be placed in the student's locker, storage space, or cubby space, again, every building's different, but that personal space, it should be turned off in that space during the school day. Each building will allow cellphone use during dismissal according to building procedures. Obviously, the one concern parents might have is there's some communication sometimes for dismissal, so again, every, every building's different. A.J.H. might be different because of when class period ends, what they do for procedure the end of day versus Powers. Their procedures are very different, so depending on the school building, possibly grade level, they will have in their buildings access to their cellphone for dismissal purposes, okay? But otherwise, in actually talking with the administrators, there really is no change from last year. K through 8, students are not supposed to have cellphones on them anyway. So really, there's no change really in policy except if there was a lax staff member or someone else that allowed it. We've had discussions with ATA and OBC, our unions, they're on the same page, they see the issues we have right now with cellphones, they're on the same page as far as they're going to tell their own members the same thing like this. We all have to participate doing this, following this policy as much as possible. Now, grade nine through 12, it's a little bit different. Cellphones will be turned off in a way during instruction time, but students are going to be allowed right now to use their cellphone during study, or lunch, in between periods. And the reason is because we have students in high school who, they're, they're leaving for college, college classes, they are coming and going at different times. We have students in sports who they might have updates from their coaches about changes in practice and so on. So the high school administration felt that we wanted to start off with allowing students' ability to use that because of so much communication happens at the high school level, okay? When it comes to storage, as we mentioned, storage, the phones will be turned off in a secure place, student locker, backpack, or a storage device provided by the district. Now, again, in K through 8, cellphones are turned off and will be placed in students' locker, storage space, or cubby during the school day. At high school, they're going to be having it with them, so the high schools are going to be providing all classrooms with a storage kind of pocket chart, so that when the student has a classroom, the cellphones will be put into the pocket chart, unless, of course, a staff member, teacher wants them to use it for instruction, then they'd be directed to get it out and use it, okay? So because of that ability to have it kind of with you at steel, we, we felt it was important for us to provide storage for teachers for where they can put it. So Mr. Teller got cellphone storage units for all classrooms, okay?
Yes.
Yes, go back.
Does the student have to put it in that? In high school, does the student have to put it in the storage container or can it remain in their pocket?
If they bring it to class, they'll probably be directed to put it, just for fairness and to be equitable, they'll probably be asked to place it into the pocket chart. Now, a student might have it in a locker, backpack, maybe locked away, maybe to bring to school that day, so it's not like we're going to, we have to have a cellphone in every assigned space where the student decides to.
If I bring my backpack to class, it could be.
It possibly could be. It possibly could.
Well, but I'm just saying.
Yes.
There is not a strict rule that it has to go into, if they walk in with their hand, I'm assuming is when the faculty is going to say, this needs to go up here, but if they say, well, I want it in my pocket, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
I'm already looking at what potential issue could very well be, because, you know.
We're using the honor system.
90% of the time, they carry it in their pocket anyway.
Yep. Just like A.J.H. and Powers is supposed to be locker. Now, could a student have it in a pocket somewhere? Possibly, it's the honor system. But if we see that, then it'll go to the next slide, which is the discipline on that, which is in policy. So we're not trying to be difficult for both students and teachers here, we're trying to be very reasonable. So for the first offense, let's say it's in A.J.H., not supposed to be having it on you, but the teacher sees a student have the cellphone. The first offense, the teacher will give a verbal warning, and for that particular time, class period, will tell the student to put it away. So we're not taking it from the student, we're not trying to put the teacher in a difficult position, it's simply, you're not supposed to have it, first offense, put it away. Let's say the student comes out the second day and has it again. Yes, Dr. Master.
Put it away mean, put it away in your locker where it's supposed to be in, or put it away on your person?
Because of a lack, a loss of instruction time, the proclamation probably would be just, just put it in your pocket, and you go back to your locker, get it away, but again, having a student leave the classroom, this instruction, doesn't make sense, you're trying to be smart and effective, but not cause too much disruption to the class anyone. So second offense would be then, similar to the first offense, but it would be basically, you know, teacher's going to ask for the cellphone just to be up on the desk, just away from the student to make sure, because it's a second offense now, but it will be probably given back, it will be given back to the student at the end of class again, trying to give them a chance to do the right thing, and we're not trying to overburden the teacher with, I don't want, we don't want teachers to have their entire class periods focused on managing cellphones. So it would be, put the phone up here, but you're going to get it back, we're not calling the parent, we're not taking, they're not getting detention, we're being very fair here, it goes back to you, but now your second offense. Third offense, that will, that will be, where the administrator will be called, the third offense, and they will be asked to, basically, the administrator's going to take the office, a parent or guardian's going to pick it up to that. And then a fourth offense would be possibly banning it, the student banning the cellphone from that student. Also, students who do not comply with staff member due to their directive regarding the cellphone and this discipline or the offenses, they could face this fact, so if someone's disrespectful, not following directions, causing commotion in class, not, you know, not basically deemed disrespectful or not following directions, they might get a detention, suspension, not because of the cellphone, but because of their actions, right?
Stop for a minute.
Yes.
The first offense, the verbal warning. How is faculty going to note that so that everyone knows that there's a verbal warning given, just like in employment, if a verbal warning is done, it's the responsibility of a management to have that documented and filed somewhere so that you know that the next time that the verbal warning was given from that perspective? Typically, that would be signed by the employee. How are we going to control that from the student perspective, because I, as a parent, will say, Mr. Moore never gave my student a verbal warning.
That would be up for administration to discuss with the teachers when they come back in in a couple days about how they're going to keep track of that. I'm sure we would recommend just that we have other class lists, charts that we keep track of, homework or other things in the classroom. I would suggest that teachers have their own.
I just, yeah, I just want to be sure that there's a check and balance there, because a parent will say, Mr. Moore never told my son that he did not have, or never told my son that he can't be doing about his cellphone, and then it becomes escalating, because I think that some parents are going to be distraught when they believe in this personally. Because they, they themselves live on the cellphone, and they communicate to their child 24/7 while they're at school. That's why I think that you're going to get some pushback from the parenting, that's just my own personal opinion.
I think we'll be pushed back, but again, as we've discussed, in certain circles.
And I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying.
Right, right, right. I mean, every, almost, almost every parent.
But you don't enforce it the way it's done.
Depends how young you are, but most, almost every parent out there right now went to school and did not have a cellphone on their person, which what we're talking about is.
I don't think that's true.
Depending on, depending on your age.
Your age, but the majority of the people that you have in school now have always had a cellphone.
No, the parents.
The parents of all pretty much had a cellphone, honestly. You're almost there.
Could you write something in Powers School about that? I don't know if I can ask you the question.
Especially in certain age, grade.
As a document, as opposed to like shooting.
Because you know how a child like that is a teacher, but they always just see the warning.
Oh, that would just make it sound like.
That's something that, again, you, again. Those, those are the teachers themselves that have to figure out what's best for that, you know, we don't want to mandate a certain way to do it, right? So every teacher's got to figure out what's, what's the most efficient easiest for that.
Okay.
Well, and then real quick, one disclaimer, I guess, about the offenses or discipline, again, that applies to the use of the cellphone. So the first offense, second offense, third offense, the consequence for using or having a cellphone after you're not supposed to during instruction time. That does not mean that there is additional discipline depending on how the cellphone is used, right? So two examples I give, one example, the student was watching a TV show on their cellphone during class time, and it was a student's second offense, so the teacher's going to do the discipline in there, which is hold the cellphone at the desk and then in class. Another example is totally different. A student took pictures of a group of students, posted a picture on social media with a threat of physical violence, right? There's not just the cellphone discipline in here, there's the code of conduct discipline which would be matched as well. So we don't want parents or students to think, well, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what I'm doing on the cellphone, I will only get a reminder, or will you take away from me for a moment, or we go to the office. No, possibly, if you're violating the code of conduct through bullying, harassment, whatever, that's additional discipline based on how you're using the cellphone. Does that make sense? So in this case, the student will be referred in a search for investigation, in addition to cellphone policy consequences, the student might have additional consequences based on, again, violating the code of conduct, harassment, bullying, physical threats, whatever that may be.
So has this been updated in our board practice?
I don't know if the cellphone policy has been uploaded to the board docs, we can check on that. Usually it takes time for NEOL to upload.
And then where else will this live? The handbooks?
Yeah, so the cellphone policy itself, full policy is in all the handbooks, and then also within the next, probably next week or so before school starts, a similar in this, maybe this presentation, we might do a common conversation video, share with parents, just to make sure they're aware.
Is this in NEOL policy, or is this what you? I mean, what I've seen, I've never seen in NEOL, it wasn't, I think this is a lot better than what I've seen in the region.
Uh, yeah, the, the state Department of Education Workforce actually put out a sample policy, this is, I would say 90% of what they have out. We added a few tweaks here and there, but we, we follow pretty much what the state reviews for example, example policy.
And we had legal review, since we made tweaks to it, we had legal review.
I can believe, so I can check on that.
We need to make sure since we tweaked it, that there's nothing from a legal standpoint, because another school board that I sit on didn't do that, and there was some issues with the changing of the language that they didn't read correctly from the legal standpoint.
We could add that discussion before.
I don't care, I don't care that it's our own language, but let's make sure that our legal team has reviewed it as well, and they're okay.
And then I just added this, which again, may be up to the parents, which, this is from the Department of Education Workforce's website, which just, I like it because it highlights the concern of why we're doing what we're doing, what the state's doing, what it's doing, and all of those, all of those highlighted links are links to research articles and other, you know, data about, about native facts, mental health, etc. So I thought that'd be good for parents to be able to click on any of those things and access to see the actual research behind their decision.
Will we be tracking, if it's even possible, the outcome of the cellphone policy, you know, as it relates to classroom destruction and distraction, and is there a way to?
Yeah, which Tracy kind of mentioned, we're going to have, we need to make sure every building's coding things the same way, so that when we want to pull the data, everyone's coded a cellphone offense the same way, so that we're pulling all the data from all the buildings, so we can kind of manage and look at, you know, the effects of the cellphone policy.
Not so much violation, but just maybe the uptick in grades or performance, or, you know, without having, you know, the, like you said, one of these things going on, or talking and texting.
Each one of them has like five, 10 years.
I'm just saying, is there, obviously they've got dad and now's from somewhere.
Yeah, so five, 10.
Yeah, and Sarah just mentioned, we could also, you know, a lot of this is anecdote from staff, so what are teachers saying, maybe, maybe the first, first, you know, first nine weeks in, send that, send that sort of to staff and ask them their thoughts on it, you know, what do you see in the classroom? Hopefully, we got a lot of positive.
Right.
Any huge impacts, students are more engaged, more focused, disciplines less, there's less bullying, there's less distractions, et cetera.
I think one of the things I'd be interested to know is how many parents are cloaking those different links, I'm going to read them, I'd just be curious, you know, like. Oh, boy, what do you guys say?
Watch, watch, watch. Watch, Missy, please, watch.
I'm just trying to protect it, is all I'm trying to do.
So this totally replaces 5136, correct?
I have to pull it up. Paul, can I?
Okay, so. So it totally, so they're not using it during lunch, between the classes, all that.
But during high school.
High school, right, yeah, high school, yeah, it's totally different.
Okay. Which is the same as it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it was supposed to be in your locker.
Supposed to be. I've seen various sort of speech videos during the evening, different things that even.
But though, but in their handbook, it said it was supposed to be in your locker, so whether or not it's been followed, is one thing, but it doesn't rule is the same as it was actually.
Thank you very much.
Sarah?
That is totally fine.
Sarah, I have some money second session.
I just wanted to share with the board, so, you know, it's a very busy time of year, and you've got some very exciting things coming up. This week, we've got freshman orientation on the 14th, popsicles with the principal that evening on the big playground at Powers, and then our girls' golf, I also added our home athletic events to this, the 15th is our steel open house, which I know Mike, Mr. Mulner sent out an email regarding the Comic Corner dedication, which is at 4:30 that evening, we'd love to see the board there if you are available. Um, also, at the same time, our girls' tennis is home, so once you've enjoyed Comic, the Comic Corner dedication, you can go out and see the girls' tennis for a bit. Um, on the sixteenth, which is this Friday, we have our school supply pickup, which will be down in the south lot. Um, weather pending because it looks a little tenuous. But right now, um, as of this afternoon, we were currently at a hundred and ninety-four folks who had signed up for school supplies. So, at this time last year, we were at ninety-seven, so we're, we're definitely starting to reach more people. Um, and then next week, we're moving into, to our big week, um, open houses on the nineteenth for A J H and Nord. Um, and then the twentieth is Powers for grades one through three. And then kids come back, grades one through twelve on the twenty-first. And I know all of the students are very excited and eager um to walk through the doors on the twenty-first. Uh, but I also add on there for our pre-K kindergarten parents um out there that your open house, never fret. Your open house is on the twenty-sixth from four-thirty to six, to five-thirty. Um.
Two things on that. On the sixteenth is also requests and storage.
Yes.
And on the fourteenth, the open house is supposed to be controlled through the first meeting for families, so hopefully.
And we'll just come to all?
Yes, come to all of the things. And then, um, I just wanted to include the link for the supply pickup, just in case there are some other folks out there who haven't um seen this just yet, so. Was that enough seconds there, Mrs. Gillis?
That was plenty, that was great, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure what Rep says about you.
That, oh, you know, we'll work on that.
All done?
Do you have one side or?
I have no important to do, because we haven't had a board yet.
Oh, that's awesome, that's cool.
You're, you're, you're really before that. Although I'm, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, but I haven't, haven't seen the agenda yet, I was like, can't even tell you without you. I'll see you tomorrow.
Can you board updates?
We have a board this week, um, there in the open house in San Francisco, twenty-ninth. And late June. That's one, that's one, and. The capital conference housing, the webinar is the twentieth. Sure.
We haven't gotten anything yet.
We haven't gotten registration there.
But the House school boards was hacked last week, so.
Okay, and I've said later, we've normally done the registration by now, we have not even done the registration yet.
Oh, yeah, the webinars, which one, yeah. And. I think that's about it for now.
Good, thank you. Personnel recommendations?
Yeah, probably a few, obviously, we tried to get everyone hired and move around as quickly as possible before school starts next week. So, thanks to all the administrators for filling in and being able to accomplish. Thank you, Janet, for all the last minute changes as well.
We want to make sure we take thirteen A.
You say?
Okay. Thirteen A.
How do we do this?
We're not.
No, we're not, yeah.
It's not eleven down.
And I just wanted to just make a mention of items you and V both have to do with Comets Live, just so you're aware, because it's a fun, fun thing. Um, Mr. Cogdow has fifty-one students participating in Comets Live, again, most of them are junior high students.
Awesome.
So, it's a huge team this year. Um, he put out forty fall events just for the fall. And he needed, you know, because a lot of the events need multiple students. Uh, so there were two hundred and seventy slots that we needed to fill with students. Um, ninety-eight percent of spots are all full. Kids have picked them up, last year at this time, it had a fifty percent full, you know, trying to get up. So, so it's very, very cool, very exciting that, um, loving that program, so, awesome. So, with that, I just want to recommend um personnel items, eleven A through eleven X.
Second?
Seven.
Verid? Need discussion?
Yes.
Rep?
Under uh E. Kyle Burke, varsity band director. Who directs the junior varsity band? I think that that job description is obsolete. Because I looked up the job description and it says varsity band director. Should not say that, because he does deal with freshmen or seniors, so I think that that needs to be addressed. Um, I don't have a problem with giving him the page, but I think that it needs to be reflected what he's actually doing. So, I don't know if that falls under, I would assume it falls under HR to update.
Yeah, we can take a look at that, and that, that title also would.
And that title needs to be addressed.
Yeah, well, that title is probably in the supplemental list.
That varsity band director has to be fifty years old, yeah, yeah.
And that's probably a title in the supplementals list in the contract, so.
It's under marching band director.
Does it say marching band director?
Yeah, man director.
So, I just think that, you know, I've asked about that since he's been hired, to, to make sure that we did that, because he had to get some credentials. So, I just want to make sure that the credentials match what he's actually doing from that perspective. Because the word that I have heard, it's been very positive, the opening in everything we did. That everyone's really excited, he's brought a whole new level of energy and excitement uh to the marching band. Not that it wasn't fabulous before, but I think that it's been very positive from everything that I've heard. So, I just wanted to make sure that on the back end of everything, that it's all good too.
What's the title B?
On the supplemental, on the supplemental schedule in the contract, it's called band director. And band director assistant is the next one down. Um, so, there's nothing that says varsity or anything. But the job description does say varsity. And, I mean, we've, we've been updating some job descriptions, but.
Okay, it's just a little thing, so when I'm gonna take action. I know you all hate me, so it doesn't bother.
No, we don't.
I just make you aware of things that pop out to me that I think are important. Especially when we're changing positions.
I'm just happy about item G, that we have a choir teacher for this year at A J H.
Yes.
Thank you, Jesus.
Yes, it's nice.
And just sort of to where, uh, Mary's coming from Shepherdville Village, she has a twenty, twenty-five years experience in wire. Um, she's making the jump to us, which is amazing. Um, and also was recommended uh by Eric Watts on the.
Oh, nice.
We just happen to know her, she was already scheduled for an interview and it just happened, it was just.
Great.
Perfect, perfect time, so.
Great.
Any further discussion? You can call the role, please.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Educational recommendations?
Yeah, we have a couple here this evening, just want to highlight uh item C, which we, we approved the handbooks, I believe, in June. But we revised them, they have the cellphone policy, and actually, they're doing a phenomenal job of going through half dozen or more policies. Uh, she went through thirty-eight pages of policy and condensed it down to eleven pages so we can put it in the handbook. So, those policies from discrimination, harassment, Title IX, cellphone, they all matched through all of our school handbooks, so. Uh, there's still more to do in the, in the future, there's probably more to do, but she did a phenomenal job organizing it.
When you're ready for it, sir.
In pursuit of alignment.
Yes. It's so moved, I'll make a motion.
No, it's good, it's great.
So, I'd recommend items uh twelve A through twelve H.
Do you have a motion? Any discussion or comments?
Thank you, Mrs. Gillis.
You remember the role, please?
Mrs. Gillis. Hi. Mr. Engel. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels. Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
And before we go to the next one, I don't know how to do this, but we want to remove it.
Um, I, I've been researching that, as we've been sitting here this evening. And what I would suggest is that somebody make uh a motion to table this motion until the next meeting.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we table thirteen A until the next meeting.
Second?
Oh, second, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any discussion about that? Just call the role.
Yes. Mrs. Gillis. Hi. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Engel. Uh, Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Yeah, we have a few items here under visitor recommendations, just want to highlight item D. Uh, Chuck Grimmett did a phenomenal job over the last couple of weeks, maybe month or so. Um, researching various different providers of fuel and was able to work with, um. You know, obviously, we have some, some things that we have to deal with as far as our tanks over at the old transportation center. Building tanks at the new transportation center, there's a lot of environmental issues along with it. Um, so those tests were completed, but uh Chuck was able to work with a company who uh we're gonna be purchasing fuel from. And through that agreement and discussion, they're gonna be providing two new tanks for us at no charge. That will be out of the ground over here at the old transportation center. That will can be used at the new transportation center. So, they'll be free of charge for the new transportation center. Um, actually, it might be four, he was talking the other day, it might be four actually. But, um, and so, and, 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 and moving those tanks to the new transportation center also free of charge. So, Chuck's saved tens of thousands of dollars by working with various people who can provide us this, what we need in fuel, but also wants to work with us to be a partner. So, thanks Chuck on that, maybe.
Because the, the cost of the fuel tanks are eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. So, I, I think it's at least three diesel, gasoline, and dev, which is diesel exhaust fluid. So, there's at least three tanks that are being provided um free, free of charge. And um it's also somebody that Chuck has been working with, um, that's an Amber Sred. He's very, very proud to make things be able to work for the district. Um, we will say that, um, we are changing fuel suppliers and the process as well. And again, Chuck did an expense, I mean, extensive study of the different suppliers that our House Schools Council approved. And, um, actually, one of them is even in Ohio World Petroleum, is headquartered in Florida. Which is really odd that they have the pre-procured contract with the House Schools Council. But anyways, long story short, in order to go with, um, somebody that, um, charges us for fuel tanks, but has state term pricing for the fuel. It would take years and years and years to save that eighteen thousand dollars what the fuel tanks cost. So, like I said, Chuck spent hours and hours doing this, we're very grateful for his work. Um, and then a little bit lower, um, you see, um, where the district is going to be contracting with another company to remove the underground storage tanks. And we're happy to say that, um, there are no leaks in those tanks, so there's no soil reclamation or any issues with the Environmental Protection Agency that we need to, to be uncovered, so Chuck's a treasure.
Yeah, really great, and then one more fun thing, just because I want to point out item F, which is in agreement with RUN Forum. Um, this is an agreement of, I think with, is it Martin, I don't know? That's a, who's, who's, um, the limit? Um, has a new, I don't know if it's a new company, but has, is using AI to help assess runners, strides, motion, et cetera. And so, by analyzing a runner's stride, motion, et cetera, through probably video cam, you know, recording them. Um, can help make suggestions on how to help the runner be a little more efficient and better with running track, et cetera. So, the agreement's gonna allow no charge, allow, will allow him to come and use our athletes and analyze them to help use his software. Uh, hopefully, he'll get a lot of information out of using our athletes, and hopefully, our athletes will get a lot of information about how they can improve their, their, uh, their running. Yeah, so, yeah, so a good, good partnership, uh, with, you know, of course, with Brock Black, who brought that to us. So, I think it'll be a really cool thing, we'll see how it pans out, so. So, with that, I want to recommend either business items thirteen B through H.
Second?
Three, so, selected?
Yes.
Rep? Any questions, comments?
Item G, do we have an idea of a closing date for that? I mean, I assume that you've started the process.
Yes, they have a.
So, do we have an idea of when that's going to close?
Yes, I'm glad we're doing this tonight because they have a board meeting, I don't have the exact date, but it's after this meeting, so within the next week or two. So, hopefully, that will, their board, they're gonna need to do with their board meeting and that we can get. We, we have the date by September thirtieth, to just give ourselves a way in case there are some issues along the way. There should not be, so hopefully, really, as soon as their board meeting's over, then a couple of weeks of going through the process of actually.
I've actually, I.
Title D, yes, yeah, yeah. So, by September thirtieth is what's in agreement.
Nice.
Anyone else? Let's call the role.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Engel. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi. I don't think we have any reason for a debate.
Can you quit?
Been here a long time.
Second?
Hey, I have a question. Yeah, I have that. Now, you made me forget it. Me? Back here when you had a board update, I had a question.
Well, you're a little late to the party, forget that.
Yeah, you're late.
Huh?
Go ahead, adjourn, I'll think about it.
You're a little late.
I'll just call whoever it is.
Okay. I'll give you, I'll give you ten minutes, go ahead.
Who seconded the motion to the?
I don't know a question, but I don't remember what I'm, what I raised.
Morgan. You move so fast.
Slowly.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind next time, for your old people.
Hi. You didn't just begin all the rules.
Call the role, please.
Mrs. Gillis. Mrs. Wackels. Mr. Engel. Dr. Messer. And Mr. Zappa.